So, good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to the December 8th, 2021 meeting of the Board of Education, the County Executive Board of Education Task Force. This is our first public listening session, and so I want to thank our task force members for joining us this evening. And more importantly, I want to thank the public members who have signed up to provide comments to the task force members regarding the work of this task force. We are streaming live on YouTube and we are recording this as well. And the recording for this meeting will be available probably tomorrow. So if you ever want to go back and review it, that will be available on the website, on the county executive's website. On that note, I will hand it over to Dr. Sean Coleman, the Chair of the Task Force, to go over some of our housekeeping notes and how we will proceed with today's public listening session. Dr. Coleman?
Thank you so much, Ms. Wilson. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Everything that Ms. Wilson said, we follow suit there. We really appreciate the public commenters and the time that you spend to be with us and to provide your input. This evening, I will go down a list of public commenters who've agreed and have indicated that they wanted to make a comment. That those comments would last for about two or three minutes. And then we will leave the floor open to the task force members to see if there are any clarifying questions. After, to the extent there's any clarifying questions, if a particular commenter clarifies, then we will move on. After you have made your comments, then we invite you to continue viewing the session during livestream. And then from there, we will make sure that the, well, the YouTube remains on the website and everyone has access to that. And that is public record. Ms. Wilson, did I miss anything?
No, Dr. Coleman, I think you covered everything. We are going to provide two to three minutes for public commenters. So please keep your comments as concise as possible and please respect that time limit as we do have other commentators who would like to speak. So, thank you.
So I will call the names according to time submitted, right? Top of my list, if you will. Erica McKinney. Erica McKinney.
I would suggest we go on to the next person. If Ms. McKinney gets further later, then we can go back.
Yep. Jana Parker.
My name is pronounced Jana.
Thank you, Ms. Jana Parker.
You're correct. Thank you. So I just wanted to first say thank you so much for the task force for meeting this evening and providing your expertise on this particular issue. As a longtime resident of Prince George's County and a graduate of the Public School System and a former teacher in the public school system, Prince George's County Public Schools is very near and dear to my heart. I continue to serve my community in that capacity as well as an educational advocate. Again, I really want to stress a huge thank you to everyone that has been picked for the task force in regards to your own level of expertise. But I must state for the record that it was extremely poorly done in regards to reaching out to the community. The community was not aware of how people were picked for this particular task force. They were not aware of this task force until we got a random email or a public Facebook post from our county executive. And therefore, it seems as if the community itself can't have buy-in into this task force because we weren't even told at the beginning of it. Additionally, I really think it's frustrating as a voter and a constituent to be consistently told that the people that were smart enough to elect think that we're not smart enough to elect those who would govern our school system and our school board. Our county executive ran on the platform of returning our school system to a fully elected board. And we have a task force that should respect that and move forward in that capacity. Again, this is not a comment on the people's expertise. It's just a level of frustration that we have a task force when the community has already spoken on what we prefer to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jana Parker. Task force committee members, do you have any questions, any clarifying questions? Giving some wait time, we'll move on to the next person. And Will Taylor. I don't see a Will Taylor in the room. So we'll come back and call that name if we see it come back up. How about Tanya Wingfield?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Tanya Wingfield, representing Citizens for Accountability for the Board of Education. I have three points. One, we fully support an appointed school board for a minimum of six years to stabilize our system. The board is an oversight body, and there are many examples of successful oversight boards where members are appointed or elected. We support keeping nine district levels in four at-large positions in the student member. The Chair and the Vice Chair must be selected from the at-large appointees to ensure a global view of the system. Minimum criteria should be established for all members based on the roles. Additionally, members must demonstrate an understanding of three critical elements of their oversight mission to identify opportunities to establish standards for success for the entire system, possess competence to work with the CEO to effect change without disrupting operations, and commit to working within the scope of the board's authority by demonstrating accountability, integrity, and performance of their duties. Also, second point is dealing with the laws, the different laws that we have. Sorry about that. Laws must clearly delineate that the authority of the board and as it relates to the CEO and then also as it relates to the Vice Chair and the Chair with the board members. Board leadership must have authority and the autonomy to manage and coordinate activities on behalf of the board. And I have to ask you, excuse me for one minute. I just need to get some water, if you don't mind. My throat is just a little dry. Okay. And please just give me a little extra time here. The hiring, firing, and promotions of internal board staff must adhere to the process of the staff of the process established by the administration for all Board of Education employees and must enforce PGCPS human, and must be enforced by PGCPS human resources. Laws must include language to impose consequences for bad behavior. What's on the books today equates to a slap on the wrist. For example, appeals to the, of by citizens to the state are dismissed because of lack of standing. Taxpayers can never show a monetary loss of their tax dollars. This is a loophole that rewards bad behavior.
In thirty seconds, Ms. Wingfield.
Okay, when it comes to ethic reports, board members are the judge and jury over their own trials. And courts need to address members when they have to recuse themselves. Third point, political strongholds and abuse of procurement transportation and transportation must stop. Elected officials cannot be granted favors by board members for their families and friends. All purchasing actions internal to the board must adhere to a process established by the administration for all Board of Education employees.
We have three minutes, Ms. Wingfield. We've got fifteen. I'll give you another fifteen or thirty seconds.
Okay, and must be enforced by the purchasing director. Schools cannot be the catch-all for all the county's social needs. And in closing, I would just encourage the task force to read Title 13A and 19A of C.O.M.A.R. And I want to thank you for that extra time.
Thank you, Ms. Wingfield. Next, we have Jonathan Brown.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Appreciate the time. So first and foremost, thank you to the task force. As a fellow volunteer, I'm the president of my homeowners association. I know this is a thankless job, but it's very, very important. I appreciate your time in doing this and hearing our thoughts for this critical element here for our community. I speak with a unique perspective, or maybe, maybe not unique, but something I think that everyone can at least find some comfort with. And that is a different perspective of a parent. Currently, within the system, I have a sophomore as well as I have a nineteen-month-old. So, you know, that's going to be, I'm very committed to the success of the public school system in which I live. And I think one thing that I would like to see, I think some, you know, I think we all, most of us, read the Washington Post article and some negative information was displaced or put out there allegedly about what may have occurred or not have occurred. And I hope that this task force, I think it will, I believe it will, will stand strong in terms of not allowing this to be an opportunity for the democracy of the people to be uncertain because potential folks would like to appoint people into positions to carry out initiatives that they desire. It's one thing that is imperative, if you look at the United States as a whole in general, is local governments being able to control their education. So having the ability for constituents to be able to reach out and be able to connect, sorry about that, and be able to connect with their, with their people is definitely key. So in summary, this little guy, right, so in summary, I would say fully elected board for sure. Definitely, there needs to be basic minimum requirements to include age and things of that sort, different than other elected forms of office. And in stricter accountability in terms of reporting and fundraising, as it is a nonpartisan position, so I don't understand why you would need to seek, to a certain extent, how much money you would need to seek to raise to be able to run for the board. And that's all for me. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I see a hand from Sue Rivera. So you're on mute? So you're on mute?
Okay, I'm good. Jonathan, thank you so much for your comments and your interest, and good luck with that age spread in those kids. My question has to do with what Washington Post article are you referencing?
There is a Washington Post article, and it referenced that, and I'm being very broad because I don't want to cast any aspersions that aren't true, but...
I know, but I'm looking for the date and where it is in the paper, so we can read it.
It was definitely, it was definitely this year. The exact date, I can't reference or read off. It was 2021, for sure.
Okay. Was it an editorial, an article, in the metro section, anything that you can...
Yeah, I'm sure. Actually, it was, it was sent to me and I clicked on it. It was a Washington Post article, and it referenced a six out of eight. Except for the two, everyone except for the two appointed school representative, school board representatives were caught in a, you know, pay for, for, you know, pay-for-help scheme or something of that nature.
Yeah, and we would like to steer away from only what the task force is here to do and able to do.
No, I'm not addressing you guys to do anything about that. I was using that as an, I don't know what the, I'd have to read your charter. But I hope, what I'm saying is that I think the task force is going to stand strong to say, I don't want that to be something that removes elected representation for our, for our school board. Like, that's something I was trying to articulate, so.
Thank you. I have another question from Ms. Thornton Thomas.
Yes. Hello, Mr. Brown. I just wanted to know, because I might have missed this. You are President of your, I missed that part. Was it Civic Association or PTA?
I'm the President of Fairwood Homeowners Association here in Bowie, Maryland.
Right, Fairwood. All right, thank you so very much.
Any other questions from our task force members? Barring no more hands, we'll go to the next person. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Pat Fletcher.
Yes, I'm here. I'm here. Good evening. My name is Pat Fletcher, and I'm a former school board member. And I wanted to talk about the elephant in the room. The elephant in the room are our politicians. The purpose, I'm a former school board member, and I was on the school board when it came back to a fully elected board. The thing that I discovered while I was on the board is the role of the board is to set policy regarding the education of our children. The role of the elected officials is to provide us with the resources to do our job. What I discovered was the elected officials were setting policy that we were unaware of, were doing things that we were unaware of. They were, I understand they want to be re-elected, and they're still doing it. Listening to constituents, I don't want to go to this school. I want my kids to go to the new school. They even went so far as to put in legislation for only the people that live in Bowie to go to Bowie schools. If the politicians provide the school board with the resources to educate our kids and do what we need to do, and the person who gives the board gaudens is the superintendent and who has the expertise to know what is going on around the country so that we can be up to date on what the board does. If the board doesn't do their job, like a couple of your other commentators said, then the voters will take care of that. The voters will vote them out. But if the politicians back out and work with the board, like Montgomery County, Montgomery County, when they're, everybody is not in session, all the elected officials get together to see what they're going to ask for in Annapolis, including the school board. They make sure that that school board gets the resources that they need to do their job. You do not see any of those school board members interfering almost on a daily basis, the, during the, performing the board's job. Board members don't go down to Annapolis to try to do the elected official's job. So I'm saying, if our politicians...
You have two and a half minutes.
Okay, if our politicians provide the school board with the resources and back out of telling the board what they should and shouldn't be doing and leave that up to the superintendent to give the board members gaudens because we are laypeople in terms of educating our children and give us gaudens, you will have an effective school board, and the voters will take care of the bad seeds.
Three minutes. Please use another fifteen seconds.
I'm done. Thank you, and I'm enjoying these meetings that you had me as well.
Thank you so much. Mr. Harrington, you have a question?
No, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to take personal privilege and say, I haven't seen Pat Fletcher in a long time. I just wanted to say hello there.
Hi, David. How you doing?
I'm fine. How are you? Good to hear from you again.
And a hello from Linda Pett as well.
Hello. Hi, Doris and Gina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks.
Hello. Do we have any additional hellos or questions from the task force? All right, I'm going to move on to the next one. We have Adeline Wilcox.
Hello, I have a light that went out at the last minute, so I apologize for that. I am a Prince George's County parent. After nine years in Prince George's County Public Schools, I put my black child in a private high school. Now, she's a student at Louisiana State University. More than ten years ago, another parent complained to me that the board didn't speak with one voice. I did not immediately realize what an authoritarian and anti-democratic person this friendly and pleasant woman was. If, you know, Prince George's County wants a board which speaks with one voice, only one person should be on the board. Now, I understand, you know, like comments made before. You know, a school board meeting could involve some polite disagreement about school grounds landscaping, and this will get reported badly by the press. But nonetheless, Prince George's County needs to make an effort to improve the schools. And, you know, I support Jonathan Brown's remarks about a fully elected board.
Thank you, Ms. Wilcox. Are you finished?
I'll just say that my late father was an elected school board member in the state of Maine, and his mother was an elected school board member in the state of Connecticut.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the task force? Thank you again for your comments, Ms. Wilcox. I'll go on to the next person, and that's, forgive me if I chew this name up, Kedji Agunle? Kedji Agunle? Okay, we'll circle back again to see if that person joins. I have a Joseph, simply Joseph.
Good evening. Thank you. I assume that's me. For some reason, the forums kept on not including my last name recently.
May you please announce your whole name then, please?
Yes, my name is, my name is Joseph Jakuta. And thank you to the task force. I live in Mount Rainier, Maryland, have two young children in PGCPS, and I'm also an advocate for schools and the environment in Prince George's County. I know there's been a lot of criticisms of the board of late, and there have been problems. But there has also been a lot of good work done by the board in the past cycle and the benefits. And in particularly, there have been a lot of benefits to the students during this time of COVID and major changes to the board structure, not the solution. I've gone to work with advocates in other Maryland counties through my work, and the situation of an all-appointed board like they have in Baltimore City seems to result in nonresponsiveness to community needs. And having countywide races like in Montgomery results in a board that only plays the certain portion of the county where all the votes are. We need to continue to have advocates in our community on the board, and that's what we have. They're directly accountable to us. We have the opportunity to vote them out, but they also can help us, whether it's when our child's bus isn't coming until six o'clock in the evening, or whether the system is facing larger issues. Our communities have advocates on the board, and with all the appointed, and all appointed board are at large seats, we'll lose that. But I don't think that, I don't mean to say that the board couldn't be better. For one, board candidates are nonpartisan, so they shouldn't have to go through two elections every cycle. This would also help with the fundraising issues Mr. Brown spoke of earlier. There should just be one election, and if, in order to deal with the issue of majority support, I would support ranked choice voting to deal with the issue of having a runoff because two elections, this is too much, and it involves too much fundraising. So also, the need for one-year residence requirements for the, so the advocates in the community know the community. And finally, compensation for the school board members should be reflective of the job that they need to do so that we get the best and brightest to represent our students and our children. But while we do need to improve the situation a bit, when it comes to schools, there's been so much progress in our county. It makes us PG proud. Please take these specific requests for reforms to heart, but also keep the elected board members.
Thank you, Mr. Jakuta. Task force, any questions? Mr. Jakuta, before you go, I have a small question, just a clarifying question.
Sure.
Can you clarify more so, are you in favor of an all-appointed board or all-elected board or combination? I wasn't very clear on that.
I, there definitely should be elected members. I kind of prefer this hybrid model like we have now. I did leave a paragraph out at the same time. But the idea of having checks and balances like we have in the State House with the governor and the legislature, and the same at the federal level, having the check and balance of a hybrid board, I think would be a decent solution as well. But definitely having elected members is crucial.
Thank you, Mr. Jakuta, for clarifying that. Task force, anyone, before I move on to the next? Okay. Is it Patrick Pascal?
Hi, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Patrick Pichol. I am a proud parent of two students in Prince George's County Public Schools. I'm also a former city council member in the city of Hyattsville. And oh my gosh, I know how much effort and time you, as members of this task force, are putting into solutions. So thank you for being involved in just the thankless job of finding solutions to big problems. Unfortunately, this task force is necessary because of the dysfunction of our current school board. It's a disgrace that our school board has had a parade of attorneys who have started and quit working with the school board because of its dysfunction and its refusal to adhere to the legal advice that the council has given. We have a lack of transparency, ethics violations, cover-ups, and more. And our school board is acting like children, not the adults that we've selected to lead. So here are my recommendations on the structure. First, we need ethics reform. I believe in democracy. I believe in elected positions on our school board. And I don't think that when someone gets elected, they should have full reign to do anything they want without recourse. We need our elected officials who violate the law to be held accountable, and we need mechanisms that actually work to hold people accountable. So the state must establish and provide enforcement mechanisms for an ethics law that applies to the school board. But also, we need this kind of ethics reform for all elected officials at all levels. These rules should provide for an independent review of ethics violations and meaningful enforcement. There should be a prohibition on donations from developers or corporations to any of these candidates. And then the body who removes members for violations should not be the school board itself. What a ridiculous thing. If the county council is the enforcement body, then we should enforce them. We should require by law that they review and vote on any of the ethics violations recommendations, whether that's removal or reprimand or something else that come from the independent ethics board. Secondly, we really should have real, actual voting power among our student members. Student members should have the right to vote on all matters, full stop. Diluting the already minimal voice of the very people who are affected by what the school board's decisions are is a very literal taxation without representation. It's a violation of the old organizing adage, nothing about us, without us. It's a system that is designed to serve the students, and they elect a representative to the school board, and that representative does not have a full voice. And that representative should have, should have a full voice in all matters before the school board. Anything less is just an insult to the students. So those are my comments. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Pichol. Task force members, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to move to the next person, Ms. Sheila Adam-Stafford.
Hi, good evening. I come to you as board member Sheila Adam-Stafford, currently on the Prince George's County School Board. And I'm really grateful to everyone here for the hard and crucial work that you're doing examining our unique board structure. I would like to continue to bring this conversation back to the focus on students. And so I want to just first start off with some quick, just sort of statements about the structure of our board and then talk a little bit about the oversight that the board has provided to improve academic achievement for students in our district. So I, I hope that in your research and in your discussions, you've uncovered these, you know, very clear facts that there's no school board that is found nationally that doesn't participate in the selecting of their superintendent. We're the only school board that is in that unique situation. Also, there is no school board to be found in Maryland that can't select their board chair and vice chair. Additionally, there is no school board to be found in Maryland that went from having a fully elected districted board to an all-appointed board, except for us. Okay, so those are just some quick structural things that I want to just put out there for you all to think about and consider as you're having your discussions. And so I've watched your meetings, and I really appreciated your discussions around equity. And I wanted to share an example of how this board's oversight identified a gap within our system, and the result led to student achievement. So very specifically, I introduced something called Equity Learning Hubs. And this was an effort to basically identify students that were really in our most vulnerable populations that were not being served by virtual learning. And so brought this to the board. This was something that came from community members who really wanted some... And so brought this to the board. This was something that came from community members who really wanted some in-person support for their students. And this passed unanimously as a board vote this year. The result, fifteen hundred students in our community schools and schools that are in high poverty areas. Those students were able to participate in in-person learning this summer and the results were amazing. Over fifty percent of the students that participated saw growth in math and English. Uh, these are the kinds of programs and kind of initiatives that are important for a board to have that oversight to say, hey, there are groups of people, um, that are not gaining access to the important services we have. Mental health, um, you know, if you haven't seen the Surgeon General's most recent critical warning about mental health with young people as a result of the pandemic, I'd urge you to check that out, but just this year.
One and a half minutes, Ms. Adam Stafford.
Board members identified, uh, the lack of mental health supports in our schools and put forward an amendment for over three million dollars, um, that now, that now has resulted in over one hundred schools in our district having more mental health professionals added to their staff. Um, so you know, I just really want to, and just to underscore, um, that the elected members of our board, um, might, you know, myself included represent the voices of over two hundred thousand residents.
Three minutes, Ms. Adam Stafford, please wrap up in fifteen to thirty seconds.
Sure, and let's maintain our promise of self-governance to people of this county with the important opportunity for oversight. So I'm happy to take any questions and I'm really grateful, uh, to be here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adam Stafford. I see a hand up from Ms. Thornton Thomas.
Um, hi, Ms. Adam Stafford. Uh, thank you for sharing that. I just have a quick question. You said the mental health, uh, officers or officials or technicians, I'm not sure what the title would be because I've heard a couple of titles. But I just wanted to know, is that, um, individual, a permanent individual or is that based on just the COVID funding? And from the CARE Act?
Yes, so I think what I was alluding to was just an example of board oversight in which we realized, looking at a system level, that there, our ratio between mental health professionals and students was way above the national average. We did not have enough mental health professionals for students, especially in some of our larger schools. And so we issued a budget amendment which would add three million dollars to do that type of work. And so now over a hundred schools have added in a mental health professional, whether that's I believe a social worker, psychologist, or a mental health support staff, uh, to support students during this critical time. And so I was just providing that as an example of how board oversight leads to real actionable policy that students and families can feel. Um, so I think that's an important crucial element to maintain, um, as we're thinking about the structure of the board, the opportunity for oversight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm Ms. Rosa Smith.
All right, um, thank you so much for your comment, Ms. Adam Stafford. My question to you was, um, you are a board member, given the, 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 the structure that you have, are you in favor of the current structure of the board design? Can you elaborate on that, please?
Absolutely. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to talk about this. So I would say, I think it's very important for us to have an elected board, an all-elected board, um, that would be essentially, um, governed by districts. I think that having an at-large seat would unfairly, um, make it so that areas that have low voter turnout would be ignored by candidates because it's very expensive to run at-large. I can tell you as someone who just ran for office, how expensive it is. Um, and so, you know, this would really, um, dilute the pool of people that have the opportunity to represent their community. Um, unless you, you know, are connected to politicians with a lot of money that will support your campaign. Um, or as some of the other folks said, and you know, major developers or organizations that want to donate to you. Um, and so it's really important to give, um, local people the opportunity to represent themselves. So I'm in favor of an all-elected board, um, giving full voting rights as the, um, my, uh, community member before me just stated, uh, to our student member of the board. And then also, you know, considering, I think the board should be allowed to choose their leadership. I think that that's a crucial component of our board that is unique to Prince George's County. Um, even if we were to maintain a hybrid board, right? Um, because as, as I said, the Equity Hubs passed unanimously. We agree on a lot of things. Um, if we had the opportunity to choose our leadership, I think there would be a lot more harmony. Um, and things wouldn't shift with the tide. So I think that that would be a definite way to create buy-in by both appointed and elected members. Thank you so much.
Ms. Thornton Thomas, did you have your hand back up?
Yes, I just have one, one other question because she brought this up. Um, what are your thoughts on running, uh, as an independent candidate versus, um, running on a particular slate or, um, connecting with other, uh, parties? Whether it's the Democratic Party or the Republicans, since, um, it is an independent, um, and nonpartisan position.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely a nonpartisan position. Um, I think that you know, the way that our structure currently is, I think that, you know, candidates that are in down ballot races, this is just like thinking about the political landscape of Prince George's County, candidates that are on down ballot races often connect with, you know, other candidates that are connected, uh, or have been in office much longer um, to help support them gain visibility. And I think that with an at-large seat, we would see essentially the candidates that, you know, have the longest record, the most access to resources. They would basically be handpicking the people that would run, um, if that makes any sense, because they would sort of bankroll their campaign. Um, and that's why I think having it remain with the districts and remain local. Um, as so many others have said, this allows that access to someone, um, and, and really allows you to have that, that impact and that, that input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Harrington.
Thank you very much and, uh, um, Ms. Adam, sorry we have to meet like this. I congratulate you for your service. So appreciate you. And thank you for your comments today. Really, really insightful.
Thank you.
Um, I, I want to get, you know, just a clarifying statement. I mean, you mentioned to go to all-elected school board.
Yes.
Um, and to a district model. So, um, are you not in favor of any of, uh, any members being elected at large? Are you just in favor of, um, a, a, a district?
I think having, yeah, thank you so much, uh, for that.
Similar, so similar, if I can jump in for a second, similar to like the county council went to district and then have two at-large members, um, on the county council to provide, you know, some balance and perspective on that. Um, so, yeah.
I think that, you know, I think that having an, an all-elected board, um, that's focused on districts will make the barrier to entry much lower for regular people. Like, I'm a business owner and I was a teacher, okay? So to run in an at-large race, my race, you know, now I'm just, I'm speaking right now as just a resident of Glen Arden right now. My race cost seventy thousand dollars. This is all online, right? You can look this up, seventy thousand dollars, okay? So that was months and months of fundraising and working really, really hard, knocked on over seven thousand doors, right? Um, and so for someone that doesn't have that type of flexibility, where's their voice, right? Where's their role in democracy? And so if there's an at-large, you know, opportunity, then that's when you see people having to take on really large donations. I mean, what would this committee think about, you know, matching campaign? Let's say for every dollar you raise, the county council matches a dollar if you raise over a certain amount, you know, thinking about other areas. That would allow for more participation for average, regular, everyday people to participate.
Ms. Chairman, if I may follow up just.
Oh, please, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Harrington.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Yeah, so that was interesting because I wonder if, if we had publicly financing for school board races.
That could be cool.
That then break down the barrier of maybe having some members run at large and some at district, but have some public financing for particularly school board races that tend to be independent. And then that would take out me somebody, some of the other speakers take out the impression of, you know, getting money from your outside constituents that, you know, give the impression of, you know, compromise. What, what would your thoughts be?
I, I think that could certainly be an interesting perspective to explore in the public financing. But then also recognizing when you run at large, you're going to, you're going to center your campaign because you have limited funds. You're going to center your campaign around areas with the greatest voter turnout. And often, unfortunately, due to years of historical exclusion and disenfranchisement, the folks on this committee know areas that have high poverty often have low voter turnout rates. So if I've only got a certain amount of money, a certain pot of money, where am I going to focus my resources? In more affluent communities. And then guess what? The voices of the people that really need the support of our public school system, they get drowned out. And so I think it's incredibly important that we consider, you know, making sure that this remains local. And especially because our county has such great variance just across i- i- the, the span of our county, from North County to South County, there are very different issues. They're extremely different communities. You know, there are so many municipalities in the central region, hardly any in the southern region. Um, we have, you know, different, you know, just groups in, in all areas of our county. And I think that when you make it an at-large seat, it becomes very difficult for someone to really get a handle on, you know, what's happening, um, you know, and how the school system impacts communities. And so that, those would be my responses to that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any additional questions for the ten? Oh, absolutely, Mr. Harrington, absolutely. Uh, Mr. Harrington, I didn't want to cut you off. Did you have any additional questions?
Okay, I appreciate the conversation. So thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Stafford.
Yes, no problem.
Any other task force questions? Thank you, Ms. Adam Stafford.
Yes, thank you so much for having me. Have a great evening.
Sure, you too. Uh, we have one more, Tommy Makila. I don't believe I see a Tommy Makila. And Ms. Wilson, I believe that not only do I not see Tommy Makila, but I don't see any of the other ones that were missing, Erica McKinney, Will Taylor, or Kedji Agunle.
Yes, you're correct, Mr. Chair. Um, none of the, the, the commenters who signed up that we called earlier have showed, showed up. So I think, um, we're probably best to proceed. I think we've, at this point, concluded our public commenters.
Thank you. Uh, so, get, get, getting the baton from Ms. Wilson, we have concluded our public comment section. Um, I turn it over to you, Ms. Wilson, uh, to, uh, move us to our next steps.
Okay. So again, I want to thank our task force members to, um, for, for tuning in and participating in our public listening session. Um, as I know, many, some of you have asked about whether or not we will do another public, um, listening or public comment session. Again, that is still being discussed, um, with our staff and, and the chairman, Dr. Coleman. Um, and if we feel that that is needed, we obviously will move forward with that. Um, and we're happy to hear any input from the task force members as well as to what you would like to see or how you would like to proceed. Um, one of the things we did share before some of you joined, um, is that, and I, and I failed to share this with the commenters before they left, but hopefully they're viewing it. If not, they can also view the video, is that we will make sure that we provide a synopsis of the comments um, to our task force members in that as the recommendations are made by you, the task force members, that there is a reference to those comments and that they, that we want to ensure people who did come before us tonight that they didn't comment and they fell on deaf ears. We want to make sure that they understand that we took their comments very seriously and then we took them into consideration in forming our recommendations. So I do want to provide that assurance, um, to both the commenters and to our task force members as well. And, and I ask again, if you have, if you were taking notes, um, during tonight's session, that is great. But again, the recording of the meeting will be available as well on our webpage. If you want to go back and review any of the comments from our public um, members, please do so as well. Um, so on that note, I don't know if there's any other questions, um, or comments from our task force members um, about tonight or any, uh, about tonight's comments or, or concerns. Um, or we do have our next meeting at our regular scheduled time is six thirty PM. And again, I do thank you for, uh, for, uh, coming, um, coming on a little bit earlier at six o'clock. Um, I will stop right there. I see, Mr. Wallace, you have your hand raised? You're muted, Mr. Wallace.
Yes, I had my hands for grace. Speaking to the young lady that we just talked to, that was a, um, member of the school board.
Yes.
Insightful to me and it raised the question, could we talk to all of them? Because absent speaking to them, we're back into the pits situation, position of reading about what's going on within the board in the Washington Post. And I trust the Post, but, uh, yeah, would, 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 would it be appropriate to have, uh, to, to, to interview all of them, some of them, whatever, to get a feel for what's going on inside, you know, inside the, the, the cabin from the people in the cabin vice, us getting our information on how well the board is functioning or not from the, uh, from the Washington Post. Even, even that short exchange was, uh, very informative to me. And I can say, I'm, I'm, I'm a longtime resident, but I'm a engineer, not an educator. And so I, I had no idea about what was involved in elections and all that stuff. And so, um, an opportunity to speak to three or four of them might be, uh, might be worth doing.
Um, I agree. I mean, I, I definitely hear your comment and I think it's a valid, uh, question and, and comment. Um, again, and I think even as part of the discussion, um, and I'll, you know, ask the chair if he has any thoughts. Um, as part of the discussion even about this second listening session, because we are still kind of mapping out some of the meetings. For the most part, you've seen the topics that we're going to cover. Um, and I know that we're still working on bringing Dr. Bolson in as well. And so if we feel like it's appropriate as we see things unfold and some of the issues come up, we, I definitely think that's something we can take under consideration.
And, and, and our related, uh, comment, um, a- 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 as we talk about what's happening in the board there. And, and, and I understand it, there's a, uh, uh, a desire to not, uh, go back and, you know, um, point fingers at people or whatever. And, and, and I, I think that's cool. But the question is, is, is there somewhere a written documentation of what's going wrong that one can read and get, okay? The, 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 the background of what brought us here in the first place that they, you know, there, there, there's a lot of fighting, a lot of, is, is there somewhere I can read up on, yeah? Now I get it why we're doing this, that's documented.
I think we received several documents, uh, prior and during to the early start of our task force. Is that correct, uh, Ms. Wilson?
Yeah, there are a number of documents, obviously, to try to give some background and context to just the school board and where we are today. Um, I know there were references to various media, media stories and things of that sort. Um, and as I think a couple of, maybe even one or two commentators mentioned, you know, that is kind of what has framed, unfortunately, kind of the narrative around our school board, um, and, and even some of this discussion, even though I think there has been some, um, there's been some concerns expressed by the public as well and by some of our, our county residents as well. You know, is there some, you know, some type of empirical study or objective, you know, assessment of it? No. I, I wouldn't, that, that's not available. Um, but I think that, you know, if you, if you, you know, view, and again, we all, you know, we all, uh, could say, well, media says this, or they frame the stories and narratives however they want to. Um, but I think even if you go back and view school board meetings, right, that, which is, which is an option as well. If you go on the school board's website and look at some of the school board meetings, I mean, you will, you will see some, some of the level of discourse that is, that is existing and that we're trying to address.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mr. Harrington, and then I want to go after Mr. Harrington, if that's possible.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would, um, suggest and urge us to sort of separate all those issues from our conversation, right? I mean, I think that the, the county is always evolving, particularly with the school board. We went through this recently with the county council and adding at-large members on the county council. We thought that, you know, having been a former member of the county council, we always had discussions of whether or not having at-large members, we give, you know, a county-wide perspective to growth and development and zoning and all the issues that we take up. You know, rather our sort of pejorative lens with, with districts. I, I, I would say that, I, I, I would urge us to the formation of this might have come from some of the board dysfunction. But that formation, that, that reasoning should not dictate then the course of action that we should decide. The course of action we decide, I thought Sheila Adams did a great job. Course of action we should decide is whether or not the hybrid system is working. Whether or not we want to, whether the structure we think given, you know, which would bring us to a, a great school system. What structure might that be? How should those people be, if we go to elected, how should those people be elected? Um, what should be, you know, what, what bylaws, gaps are available? I think that Regina, good friend I haven't seen in a long time, but Regina, I thought did it, and, and her team did an excellent job last week about outlining what should be the function and what should be the bylaws and what should be. And I would, I would encourage us to sort of pay attention to that. Um, and, and. Um, and, and, and come out with recommendations that we think work in the best practices like what Regina talked about, what we heard today from the public. And we come out with some best practice recommendations that we think, uh, uh, would much more bring us to than, you know, sort of, you know, the so-called world-class system. Uh, and not get into the sort of fray that, that has happened in the past, that might have been some of the impetus that brought us together. But, but, but shield ourselves from that and look at the, what are best practices and other things um that, that certainly can bring us to some policies that, that, that will bring us higher governance. So I, I would throw that out as a suggestion for us to consider. And we've got some great, we've got some great people here like Doris Reed who knows this stuff and, you know, Regina who's been on the board and business people and others who I think would come to that perspective. And, and Linda Thomas who was on the board, who, who could give us that perspective and certainly then guide us on whatever kind of recommendations we want to make. So thank you for allowing me to, to s- uh, speak, Mr. Chairman.
Now, thank you for providing that wisdom, uh, Mr. Harrington. You took some of the words right out of my mouth uh, and probably said them better than I would have fumbled to, to say them myself. So thank you. But ultimately, yes, we're here to look at best practices, regardless of why we're here and how we got here. We're looking at best practices and we're getting, we're, we're using resources to that end, uh, great resources. Um, as far as interviewing or, uh, the, the, the current board, you know, I appreciate Ms. Adam Stanford's, uh, position today. She came as a citizen. Uh, the other board members are fully, fully welcome to join the public comment or write in as a citizen. But I, I, I hesitate to go to them as a, as a board and, and, unless as, as, as a citizen to get their input. We're looking at best practices in the field.
I think I, I want to add to that comment a little bit and, and I, I agree with, um, is it Dr. Wallace? All right. And, um, I, and I, and I kind of see things on, um, I kind of see things, um, in two ways. I think that there's benefit to move on um and, and, and really di- you know, do the best practices. But I also believe that there is some value to learning a little bit of the history and, and really getting to know what, what wasn't working, what is not working, what will not work. Um, because sometimes when, when, when we're writing best practices, we kind of have to know the why. Why didn't it work? And, and I think that there is some value in looking at, at both. And I really too appreciated the candor and the spirit in which Ms. Adam Stanford came in this evening. Um, because, um, you know, she is in the position, and I'm always cautious about writing best practices in a position that I've never had or that I've never been a part of or that I don't know, you know, that I've been too. So I can only speak as an educator and as a citizen and as a, as, as a, you know, person on this task force. But I think it's important that we do, uh, look at all the, the entire views of, of everybody. I think the, the, it's worth, it's worth the visit because if, if, if it's, if it's, obviously, there's some broken pieces for us to be in this task force. But we haven't really, I haven't really heard much about the broken pieces. I've heard about politics, I've heard about ethics to this evening, and, and I've heard about, um, voting and, and those kinds of things. And so I, I'm very interested in hearing actually both sides for me to make a recommendation of best practices. Thank you for the floor.
Thank you. Happy Regina, you had your hand up and then Ms. Reed.
Good evening, everyone. I was actually just going to speak sort of to the structure conversation that keeps coming up. And nationally, um, hybrid boards are, are an anomaly, um, and for a number of reasons. Some of the reasons are the political structure. So in some ways, it's viewed as how do we satisfy both sides? Have an elected board so that people can't complain that they can't vote for their board, but at the same time have an appointed, um, component of that. And so the belief, a- at least across the country, when we think about it and talk about it in, um, various states, is that it's a design to be, just by design is contentious. Um, it creates this us and them sort of conversation, or at least that's been some of the conversation that we've seen naturally. So I, I just wanted to point out that the structure of the hybrid board is considered, um, not the norm, um, across the country. So it's either appointed or elected, but not both. Just sharing that information.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Jacob. I'm Ms. Reed and I'll see you, Mr. Rose.
Hello, uh, yes, I just want to say, I think David hit it right on the head, that, you know, we're looking at the structure. What is going to work best for the board overall? I think there's a reason that there are no current board members on this task force are being involved in the task force because it's not about them. This is not about the current board and what's happening now. This has been going on for years. We have been going back and forth between the elected board, the appointed board, you know, the hybrid board. We're trying to look at boards of education across the country and come up with what will work best for us. It doesn't have anything to do with the current people that are sitting on the board. They are still dealing with their own issues that we definitely don't want to get into. And if it's about an election and what happens with the board election, you have Ms. Thomas, Ms. Jacobs, who both went through that election process, who have both been behind closed doors with the exec sections of the board. So they can answer any, any of your questions that you have without bringing the other people in. I think it would just cloud the issue if we were to bring the new board members in. When you talk about the history, Dr. Thornton has already come in and has given us the history. We were given the documentation of what the law is as far as the duties of the Board of Education. We already have that. So I, I don't think we want to bring too many people into this from that point. At least we, I, I think we have the information and we have the people sitting here that can answer, um, the questions that you might have about how the board works, how the election goes and, uh, that type of thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Hello, Mr. Rose, did you still want to comment?
Yeah, just, uh, I, I think I, you know, I try, been trying my hardest to be quiet in this. I think there's kind of two important pieces I'd like to call out. One is I don't think we have yet, and I think we are, at some point will, um, to Ms. Reed's point, discuss the actual law, um, and the actual responsibilities of the board, not the broad strokes. So I do think there has been some generalizations that this board has that are different than others, as Ms. Ja- Ms. Jacobs has stated. So there, there probably is a need. I think there's a lot of assumptions about what the roles and responsibilities and powers are. And I'm not sure if we've done justice to this, if we're going to really make good recommendations. Second to this is, um, this actually goes back to, that was Thornton stated. And he spoke to the e- the educational ecosystem that, you know, that our county needs to have, as he says, to wrap our arms around our babies, as he, as he quotes. And, you know, the reality is that there are other actors in this conversation that are, are not at the table. And maybe that's by design, but I do think their perspectives are important. The county council appoints a member to the current board. Um, so they, they have an active role in this process, not even, not about the financial fiduciary responsibility. The actual appointing of a member structurally is something we should probably consider whether or not that should or should not be if we make recommendations. And then lastly, um, the power of our local board is derived by the state. It is not derived by county charter. It's, it's actually given to us by the state. And the state ultimately will be the decider as to how the board structure will be amended, changed or not. And I do believe their perspective is important, not necessarily to decide where our recommendations are. But the interplay between the different levels of government is something we can't ignore. And if we do, I think we do ourselves this justice and ultimately will be our final recommendations, whether compensation, structure, um, training requirements, age requirements, all that is going to be derived by the states granting the county that power and authority. And I think it would be our, it would be a misstep if we didn't think about or include their voice, at least as a reflection for us as we make our recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I appreciate everyone's comments. What struck me, and I wrote, wrote a couple of notes as, as you guys were talking, but to so many last points, Mr. Rose, we, we have subcommittees to dive a little deeper on some of these areas. And so I think that's working or poised to work at least. The other part of it is we are still in the information gathering phase to, you know, within our subcommittees. And we're getting some information here, but our subcommittees are working as well. And I think that's going to benefit us ultimately is a combination of our subcommittees with our overall uh, information gathering, uh, uh, pieces and phases and structures that we're doing now, getting information from the public, getting information from sort of, uh, local historians, if you will, and then also speaking to C E O and other, um, uh, presenters moving forward. Anyone have anything else to add? Say? Input. I would urge us, if we have not, um, afforded the opportunity to meet with our subcommittees, to please, please, please do that. Because, I mean, we have a, we have a tight timeline. We are going to consider whether or not we're going to request an extension. But currently, even with an extension, it's a tight timeline. So we really need your help with, with the subcommittee work. If you've not, um, been able to respond, uh, maybe this is a good time since we, we, looks like we'll have a few extra minutes. Uh, maybe a good opportunity to respond to, you know, when we are available for a subcommittee meet, uh, and make sure that work is happening. Ms. Wilson, did you have anything else to add?
Um, no, and I appreciate that, um, the, the, that last comment, Dr. Coleman, we are, you know, we have been moving forward with the subcommittee meetings. Um, I know that, um, that, uh, Dr. Rosa Smith of Subcommittee, we have been attempting to schedule something. So those who are on that Subcommittee for the compensation and terms, please, um, you know, make sure that you're responding. I have, um, sent out, um, emails trying to lock, lock down a date. Um, and so I will be reaching out again because we do need to, to start that work and really get in dive into some of the, the details of behind that work. So, um, for those who have responded, I thank you for that. And again, I'm just asking that we, you know, as, as Dr. Coleman said, um, you know, these, obviously, these meetings are very important, but a lot of the real work is going to happen on those subcommittees and, and, and especially as you're framing out those recommendations for those particular areas. Um, on that note, next week, um, according to the schedule, we, we will be talking about, um, compensation terms and professional development. Um, we also are looking to secure, um, our guest speakers for that next, next week. But obviously, as we've done in the past, we will get that information out, um, to our task force members as soon as that is, that information, those details are secured. Um, and again, I appreciate each and every person's comment. I think, you know, this is where the task force works. Obviously, you know, um, we had a vision, but we want the members to really be the driving force behind this, behind how this task force operates and how it works and, and how it operates and what you think you need in order to come forth with the best recommendations needed. So again, I thank you for that. Um, Dr. Coleman, unless you have anything else?
I have nothing else. Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
So again, thank you, each and every one of you. Please have a safe and wonderful evening. And, uh, please be on the lookout for other communication, um, from county executive staff with regard to our next meeting. So, good night.
Thank you, everyone.